Good evening, it is past 6:00 P.M., so we're going to call the order, the regular city council meeting of City Crescent City this April 1st, 2019, and if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Falman?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Mayor Protemkine?
Here.
And Mayor Enscore.
I am here, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Greenow, would you please lead us?
Absolutely, ready and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We don't have any action to report this evening, but we do need to return to closed session after we finish all the open session items.
All right, very good, thank you. We will move on then with public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion on those items or act on any non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff or appropriate action which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed towards the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment's limited three minutes, and we'll let you know that you will have an additional opportunity to speak publicly on any agendized item before action is taken on the council, by the council. Do we have any general public comments this evening?
My name is Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. April is Mental Health Awareness Month. Rural mental health in coastal southern Oregon and northern California is particularly challenging. We challenge this, to challenge this, we're looking for at least 240 individuals, businesses, organizations, government entities, or nonprofits who rely on good employees to donate $50 each to the production and distribution to over 22,016-page, four-color newspaper inserts to be placed in major newspapers in Coos, Curry, and Del Norte counties in September, which is Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. Our goal is to remove the stigma around suicide by understanding suicide prevention and dis-mystifying it from informational, with informational sections outlining important risk factors, warning signs, and contributing factors, how to interview and talk with, intervene and talk with someone you're concerned about, what to say, how to determine if it's an emergency, and what to do if it is. It will have a special section on youth, veterans, the elderly, and usually overlooked area, the impact of suicide on the workplace. For your donation, you will get your name on, or the name of your organization, featured on the back cover, joining with many other community members to reduce this problem, eventually to zero, the number of suicides and attempts in Coos, Curry, and Del Norte counties. We plan to use the extra money to fund 501(c)(3) public awareness projects around suicidality. The organization must contribute $50 to the insert program in order to qualify for a potential mini-grant. Donors who would like copies, extra copies to distribute within their organizations, in their lobbies and other places that they see an opportunity to reach remaining county citizens, may order boxes of 375 copies for $125, which figures out to 33 cents apiece. We also ask support to promote the project on your social media and other appropriate lists, so we can saturate our counties with suicide awareness inserts and projects during September. We hope you see the value in this and get the information in the homes of your neighbors where it's handy for reading and learning about suicide prevention, and start noticing how many of their neighbors, friends, and family might be on the verge of crisis, and how important it is to know what to do and not do to show you care. Suicide is at an all-time high in the U.S., in Oregon, and in Curry County. Join us to change this scenario, to make a difference in the people's lives and the health of our communities. And we are tied with the United Way of Southwest Oregon, and that covers Del Norte County, and this is already published, we're revising it. It is a beautiful book, it is the best publication I have seen on suicide awareness. And you know me probably, from many years coming up here working with suicidality, and this is the next step for September. So I, you've got a donation slip on your desk, and I hope I hear, see a check from each one of you, which is, goes directly to United Way, and from the council as a whole to represent the board. Jackson and Josephine Catty did it out there, and I'd like to see it done here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other general public comment this evening?
My name is John Evans, I'm not a resident of the city, but however, I do live in the county. I came this evening to address, and to address the three ordinances that are for consideration as it pertains to the homeless population in Del Norte County. First off, I'd like to thank you, this is a very divisive subject that has been coming up in our community for a long time now, and you guys have, very brave to put your names out there and to make a decision and to hopefully approve these ordinances. At this time, I don't feel by approving these ordinances that it would in any way impact the homeless population in a negative way. They still have plenty of resources available, maybe not plenty of resources available to them, but there are resources available to them within our community that will still be available to them. It merely protects the citizens of this county and this city, so that their rights are protected as far as the image that our community has, their property values. It is becoming an issue. It breaks my heart that we see this community, and we've seen a gradual slide into disarray, and at times it feels like nothing is being done or nothing can be done. So I'm encouraging you to vote yes on these, on these items this evening. One of my main concerns is that I do live in the county. One of these ordinances, it pertains to the city, and it is, it's specific to the city. So I know we have some board of supervisors present this evening, and I would encourage them to also take these ordinances into consideration to make this a county-wide policy. I don't feel that it's problematic to encourage people to move on and to not set up permanent camps in our community where they live. As a member of this community and a homeowner, I pay property taxes, and at times it feels it's a slap in the face to me, because I've seen these encampments, they're permanent. They don't plan on packing them up and moving along, they're not transients, they're permanent residents. I've seen them behind Safeway. A gentleman had a garage setup made out of tarps and a truck parked in it. That is a problem. That is a huge problem. And that's about all the time I need this evening. I'd like to thank you once again very much for having this public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Do you have any other general public comment this evening? Okay, seeing no other general public comment, we will close public comment, and we will move on with our agenda. We do have one ceremonial item, and it is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation, so I'd like to read this proclamation into the record and then give representatives an opportunity to, to address this to the council and to the public at large. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Crescent City recognizing April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders, from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Crescent City, and whereas it is estimated that one in three girls and one in seven boys will be sexually victimized by age 18, and whereas sex trafficking and exploitation happens in our community disproportionately impacting the lives of youth, young adults in our community, and whereas the city of Crescent City and the North Coast Rape Crisis Team have partnered to provide expanded emergency services to citizens impacted by trafficking, sexual assault, and domestic violence, and whereas the North Coast Rape Crisis Team has partnered with Seropnemis International of Crescent City to provide anti-trafficking workshops for hospitality workers who may have the opportunity to identify, safely intervene, and refer, and whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others to support those impacted and ensure survivors are not revictimized, and whereas promotion of best practice responses is accomplished through multidisciplinary teams such as the Sexual Assault Response Team, as well as partnership with governmental, tribal, and community-based organizations, and whereas the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provides prevention education, self-defense, and awareness-raising programs, encouraging every person to participate in ending sexualized violence and promoting social justice. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of Crescent City reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence, and acknowledges April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Hopefully I don't cry this time. So hi, my name is Liz, and this is my teammate Yami, we're with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. We would like to thank the council for once again recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Awareness Month. Each year, it is a reminder that sadly the issues are still with us, and yet it is also an opportunity to honor those we serve. We work each day to provide 24-hour free and confidential services to people of all ages, genders, and circumstances who have been impacted by this violence. We believe that violence is a choice, that no one deserves to be hurt, and that as a community, we can work to promote safety and accountability. To those ends, we participate in a variety of collaborations and multidisciplinary teams with other community, governmental, and tribal organizations. I would like to mention in particular accomplishment this year, which directly benefits the citizens of Crescent City. The North Coast Rape Crisis Team received funds through the Community Development Block Grant, lovingly called the CDBG, to be able to provide limited emergency services to survivors of sexualized violence. We also strive to raise awareness and provide prevention education in the community. We do this by providing a wide range of violence prevention programs for child, teens, and adults through the year. We also raise awareness through such events that are listed in the SAM poster that we have provided to you. We would like to draw your attention to a few specific events happening in April. We have teamed up with the Seropnemis, Seropnemis to provide free, a free human trafficking awareness workshop specialized for those working in the hospitality field, although there is room for you all to attend those if you would like to. And in addition, April 24th is International Genes for Justice Day, you guys have a blurb and a sticker. Genes for Justice gives each of us an opportunity to stand with and for survivors, to let them know that what happened to them is not their fault, and to hold those who choose violence accountable for the choices they make. If you would like any additional stickers or information on Genes for Justice, just let us know. We want to encourage your participation, and we appreciate your support. With you as our community partners, we can truly work towards our vision, a world without violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will continue then, under reports and presentations, we have none. We have several items on consent, and so I will identify those and then open up for any potential public comment and then an action by the council on consent. Regular council meeting minutes from March 18th, the warrant claims list, March 9th through March 22nd, the payroll report, March 16th through March 22nd, Randy McPherson Camp Host Agreement Amendment Number One, on an agreement for an additional camp host at Shoreline RV Park, Child Abuse Prevention Council Cultural Fee Waiver Request. So those are the items that we have on consent tonight. Is there any public comment on anything on our consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action.
Motion to adopt consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Falman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkine?
Yes.
And Mayor Enscore.
Yes, very good. We will move into public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight, and before we address them, I need to make a statement, and then we will open up public comment. After the publish, after the agenda was published Friday afternoon, we received notification regarding the ordinances that are on our agenda tonight, and the question of their legality was posed, and because of that, we have made the determination that we will place these back to staff and legal counsel for consideration on ensuring that everything that we have placed matches up with, with law. So with that in mind, the council will likely take an action tonight, but we will still have an opportunity for public comment, a single public comment, on the action that the council is going to entertain if there is one.
I'll move to table these three items.
Do you have a motion to table ordinance 804, 805, and 807? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have public comment tonight regarding ordinances 804, 805, and 807? We will not be taking any action other than voting on whether that they will be tabled, but any of these items are available for you to make public comment this evening before we vote. Do we have public comment on any of these items? Okay, then we will close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the council. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes.
Do I have somebody?
Karen.
I'm sorry, wait, you gotta come up here, I, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see you.
I guess I want a clarification. Can we just speak, if I want to speak in favor of the ordinances, or this is not the time?
No, this is, this is absolutely the time, and if I didn't make it clear, if anybody has any public comment that they would like to make regarding these three ordinances, you're welcome to make that public comment tonight. On any, whether that's for, against, concerns, things that you think should be there that aren't there, things that are there that you don't think, it is your public comment to, to address. We want to make sure that people have an opportunity to speak regardless of what action we, we take tonight.
Okay, all right. But you will bring them, these back again, right?
They will be coming back after we have addressed them at a staff and legal level.
Okay. So on the parking, I would like you to vote in favor for the parking, all three of them I'm in favor for, but parking in particular, there's a bus that is three days here, three days there, by a park, by the kids in a park, we don't know what's going on inside of that, that particular vehicle. The landowners have no, no means of getting rid of it or out, out from their property, and I just think that we need to give the tools to the city police to be able to enforce things like this that, that come up. And as far as the camping, I work downtown. I don't live downtown, by the way, I live in the county, but I work downtown, and I'm in the thick of it. I've seen tents outside of restaurant. That's not okay. We are a tourist, that is our focus. I, my office is there, I have to lock my door a lot of the times because of what's going on. Screaming, cursing, I hear it all. It is very bad for business, and that is what we need, that's what our downtown's all about. And so I encourage you very much so to pass these ordinances and give some tools to our city police to be able to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have other public comment this evening? I don't want to miss anybody. All right, then we will, then close public comment, and we'll bring it back. The, the action that is before the council is to table items eight, nine, and 10 on our agenda. And I have a motion and a second for that. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Falman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Protemkine?
Yes.
And Mayor Enscore.
Yes. We will move on, we have no continuing business. We do have some items of new business. Item number 11, our agenda, ordinance 808, amending the city municipal code by adding Title 14 regarding procurement procedures, and it also would include repealing several chapters in the municipal code. Mr. Weir?
Thank you, Mayor Enscore. Yes, staff is, is very excited to bring this ordinance before the council tonight. This ordinance has been in the works for, for some time, so I'd like to thank our finance director, Lynda Lever, who will be giving the presentation, as well as our city attorney, Ms. Rice, for their hard work on this. There's a lot of moving parts on this. This ordinance is really all about increasing staff efficiencies. And so with that, I'd like Lynda Lever to come up and give you all the great details.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What's before you tonight is the introduction of a new procurement ordinance. So for just some background, our current procurement ordinance is located in municipal code Chapter 15, Sections 30, 31, 33, and 34. 32 is about something unrelated. We also have various policies and memos and internal documents. It just makes the procurement process very complex. There are local rules, state rules, federal rules. When there's grant funding involved, there are rules for the particular granting agency. So procurement is very complicated. Our ordinance was last updated in 2008, so over 10 years ago, and since that time, there have been changes in the state public contract code and federal grant administration and federal procurement regulations, as well as we have some longstanding staff concerns about the efficiency of how this process works. So we've been working on this new ordinance for probably at least six months now, trying to find a way to streamline the process and update our ordinance with the new state and federal requirements. So the first thing is to take out the sections that are in Chapter 15, which is the, basically the chapter about buildings, and move procurement into its own chapter so that it's easier to find everything that you need as far as procurement and bidding regulations for different types of projects in one place. So it's proposed that will become the new Chapter 14. We've also made updates to contract authority levels, the procurement procedures, including bidding procedures, and then removed two of the sections. And I'm going to go through what all those changes are. So for contract approval authority, currently the city manager can approve contracts of $50,000 or less, and the city council approves all contracts that are over $50,000. When this ordinance was last updated, that $50,000 threshold aligned with the state public contract code, so it made sense. But now the state code has changed, so we'd like to just update our ordinance to keep everything as simplified as possible, and also add authority for the finance director to approve smaller contracts of $10,000 or less. And then the city manager's contract authority would go up to $60,000, and then anything over 60 would still come to the council. Our current municipal code has basically two types of procurement that are described. One is for public projects, and the other is basically for everything else. We actually would like to separate into three types of procurement, just because based on what you are procuring or purchasing or contracting for, there's really different things that make sense. So we'd like to have a section for public projects, a section for goods and non-professional services, and then a separate section for professional services. Public projects, we will just still follow the state public contract code. We've just updated the language, included some more explanations. We have more complete descriptions about the bidding requirements under the state public contract code. For projects that are $60,000 or less, the city can use force account, which means the city's own employees, or negotiated contract or purchase order. $60,000 to $200,000 is informal bidding, and over $200,000 is formal bidding. We also have described the procedures for the rejection of bids, the withdrawal of bids, how contracts are awarded, when there are prevailing wage requirements, bond requirements, and the design-build procurement process. And these are all just following the state code. For goods and non-professional services, currently we have three levels of what's called a small purchase, $100 or less. $100 or less, $100 to $15,000, and $15,000 to $50,000. And then over $50,000 is just a competitive sealed bid. There are no specific...
And we are back. All right, Ms. Lever, continue, please.
Okay. So I believe we were on the proposed limits for goods and non-professional services. So our proposed limit would be, a micro purchase would be up to $500, and I'll go into what each of these means. Small purchase would be 500 to 60,000, and a large purchase would be over 60,000. So for a micro purchase, up to $500 purchase could be authorized by the department head or manager, must have budget available for the purchase. The department head or manager must verify that it is a reasonable cost, but we would not require a purchase order before the purchase could be made. How that's different from our current practice, the limit is $100 right now before you need a purchase order. And our auditor last year recommended that we increase that to reduce the staff time and paperwork involved in making what are really relatively small purchases. I looked back, and in fiscal '18, 47% of all purchase orders that we processed were for under $500. That's a lot of paperwork. So our new small purchase limit would be $501 to $60,000. You would need a purchase order for that. If the purchase is $1,000 or more, you would have to get quotes, and we would award the procurement to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. How that's different from what we're currently doing, small purchases were split into three sub-levels, this just simplifies it. And again, it had required a purchase order for everything over $100. And the upper limit was $50,000 in accordance with the state public contract code at the time. We are going to raise that to 60,000 to match the current. Large purchase is over $60,000. There would be two methods of awarding these purchases, either a sealed bid, which is basically for construction-type projects, or competitive proposals. A sealed bid is awarded to the lowest bidder. A competitive proposal is awarded based on what is the most advantageous to the city, with cost being one factor, but other elements also being considered. And this is typically when you have like a service, and you want to look at somebody's qualifications or their references, things like that. How that's different from our current practice, we're raising the limit from 50,000 to 60, and in our current, the actual process of how to do a competitive proposal was not described, so we've included that. A few other items in this section, prevailing wage requirements are described. Again, that's all governed by state code, but it just helps to have an explanation all in one place. We are describing and authorizing cooperative purchasing or piggyback contracts. That's where another agency such as the state or a federal agency has already negotiated a price with a particular vendor. So if that is the case, we could just go out and purchase from that vendor at that price that was negotiated by the state or federal agency without going through our own procurement process, because we're probably not going to get a better price than that anyway. We did retain the local preference of 5% on goods and non-professional services that was in the current code. For professional services, in our current code, it's not really specifically described professional services. We have a definition included in the ordinance that's in your packet. Basically, it's things like accounting, auditing, architect, engineering, things like that. The micro purchase limit for these services would be 5,000. Small purchase would be 5,000 to 60,000, and large purchase would be over 60,000. So for the micro purchase, it basically works the same way as a micro purchase of goods, just the limit is different. And that's really because you're not very often going to find a professional service that's under $500. So we thought $5,000 was a reasonable place to start. Again, can be authorized by the department head or manager if there's budget available and it's a reasonable cost. Small purchase of between 5,000 and 60,000, you would have to have a purchase order, and you would have to obtain proposals. And then professional services would be awarded based on the qualifications and competence, with reasonableness of cost being one factor. A large purchase would be over 60,000, and it would require a formal request for proposals or request for qualifications process, which is described, and again, awarded on the basis of qualifications and competence and reasonableness of cost. One thing that was added to this section is that it does not apply to insurance, insurance adjusting legal and related services, because we are required to have those. And it allows the city manager or finance director to obtain those services if they are required, even if we don't have the budget for it yet, until the budget can be approved. Basically, that lets us act in some sort of unforeseen situation where we can't wait two weeks to come to council, for example, if we have some unexpected legal bill or insurance bill. We've added a chapter describing the federal procurements. These were updated in the Code of Federal Regulations, Section 200. There are, basically in the federal section, everything that was in the previous sections still applies as city policy, but then there are additional requirements on top of that. And this is anytime we're using any federal funds for the purchase. The additional requirements are spelled out in that Code of Federal Regulations 200. There are descriptions for considering the most economical approach, and that could be, for example, looking at whether to lease or buy something. There's definition of a responsible contractor, the kind of records that we're required to keep, the fact that competition has to be open and fair, and there's some description of things that would be considered not open and fair. Geographical preference is typically not allowed with any federal procurement. There are a few exceptions, but they would be spelled out in the grant award. We have to have clear and accurate solicitations, basically the bid documents. And there are specific requirements for each of those levels of procurement, micro purchase, small purchase, formal bidding. There are also additional requirements to send out notice of bids to minority and women-owned businesses. There's specific language about what the contract cost and price has to include and how it's calculated, certain contract provisions that have to be included in our contract with the contractor, and conflict of interest is of course prohibited. Some additional sections that will be in our ordinance, we've described what the bid protest procedures will be, exceptions to this chapter, including if there's only one possible source to buy something, or if there's a declared emergency, and giving the city manager the authorization to dispose of surplus, supplies, and equipment. So the two sections that are proposed to be removed, 15, Section 33, is the local hiring for public works projects. It required contractors to make certain good faith efforts to hire local workers on public projects, and it had record-keeping requirements for both the city and the contractor. The reason we're recommending to remove it is because it cannot apply to federally-funded projects, and almost all of our public projects are. It also has to be continually reevaluated based on evolving case law, and it increases the burden on the contractors. So when that happens, one of two things will result. Either the contractors will pass on those additional costs to the city, or the contractor will just not bid on the project because it's too much of a burden. We're proposing to remove Section 1534, which allowed a 5% preference for small businesses who are bidding on public projects. It also required contractors to make a good faith effort to subcontract 50% of their award to micro businesses in the area as well. And again, record-keeping requirements for both the contractor and the city. And we're recommending to remove it for the same reasons. It doesn't apply to federally-funded projects, and it's an increased burden on the contractor, and it has to be continually reevaluated based on case law. So those are all of the changes. What we would like to do tonight is just to introduce the ordinance to have a public hearing at the next meeting for adoption. But of course, if you have any questions or anything that you would like us to change, we're happy to do that.
All right, council.
I like it. I appreciate looking at efficiencies, and obviously, I think this is going to improve your customer service as well in all of that.
I certainly hope so.
Well, 47% of your...
We will have a lot more time.
POs, yeah, exactly. So I like it very much. Thank you for all your hard work, and everyone else's.
Thank you.
Counsel.
I think anything that you can do to improve efficiency and to save time on paperwork is a good thing. I work for the state for a living, and paperwork is kind of one of those unfortunate things you got to do, but if you can cut down on it, it saves you time, it saves you effort. It's good.
Okay. Just a couple of things. One, in removing the sections regarding local preference for projects, while I appreciate that many of our public works projects are federally-funded money, CBDG money, and passenger money, it doesn't mean that all of them are. Would it be possible to consider writing in, since we're doing it now, a section that addresses local projects that we are doing with general fund money or whatever, that could offer a local preference in those cases specifically? Just, that's a question that, because that is, I did some reading on this today, and that is pretty common, that other cities and municipalities have a local preference written in and separate a clause that simply identifies that federal, because federal money is not allowed. But it just seems like there could be a situation where we could be doing a project that's not federal money, that was just, because state money, I mean, I'm thinking of projects, money that we get from the state, projects that we've even done recently that the local transportation commission has funded that wasn't federal money, that if it had gone, in those cases, they didn't, but if those had gone, it had to go on out to bid, and this 5% local preference, again, using the same standards that we use in the new chapter for a local vendor, that they have to provide the same quality of service as the next lowest bidder, that there could be a way to address this from a project basis. And I don't know, staff, council, maybe you guys can weigh in on that.
So there's not currently a 5% preference for public works projects. There's a local hiring requirement, which is what requires the good faith effort that any contractor who's applying for one of a project, submitting a bid, they have to document their efforts to hire at least 50% of their workforce from Humble, or from Del Norte County.
Sure.
So that's the local hiring preference. The other piece was a small business preference, which did give 5%. So we do have a local, now, we do have a local vendor preference for goods.
Yeah, and I have that in front of me.
Yeah, so that's the 5%.
But that's for purchasing.
That's for purchasing, that's not for...
That would not have to do with contracts and projects.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, is there an appropriate concern to be able to say that for contracts and projects, that we can offer that same local preference? If we're not talking about federal money.
Are you referencing like Margie and Harding and all of those where we partner?
Some of those ended up being, were state monies, and some of those because they were emergency projects, they didn't go through the normal building process. But let's say that they weren't emergencies, and they were things that we were, they were doing with SB 1 money.
Sure.
State money, then, and I read, and I'm not saying we have to have it, I read a lot about this issue today of people who have questioned it, they've questioned it, and part of the reason that federally it's not allowed is it's been questioned as part of the 14th Amendment, whether or not you can do this. It just seems to me that if we're going to have it as one part of this, of the municipal code, where we make it available for vendors, if it's not because of a federal mandate, should we provide that same incentive and benefit to a local contractor if they can provide the exact same service and it's not federal money?
And you're saying like a 5%
Yeah.
...cost sort of reduction for the local person, and when considering the low bid?
Yeah.
I would want to research that before giving you my opinion on whether we could legally do that.
Okay.
My concern is that the city's a general law city, and we are bound by the public contract code, which very clearly sets out, you know, rules and methods, and that it is the lowest responsive and responsible bidders that is to get the award. So by then saying, okay, you're not the lowest bidder, but we're going to give you a 5% credit, now you're the lowest bidder, I do have some questions about that.
Yeah, and I did some reading about the state of California and pulled up some other cities' codes, and it appears that that is in the state of California, that at least 45 of the 50 states have this as part of both their procurement as well as their contract project language. Whether or not that's appropriate for us or not, it just seems like if we're going to put this in, and I know you guys probably thought this was a slam dunk, just we can get this done, it needs to be done, but I just feel like if we're going to do it, let's do it right one time. And if that's something, you know, we've all, just probably every one of us at some point in time or another, as an elected, has touted the importance of shopping local, of doing business with our local, supporting our local business. And the argument that I would make is that while there may be a 5% reduction, the value of a local contractor having that business, and then the taxes and the generation of economic wealth that comes back into their community, for somebody who's doing business here, who does business here, seems to make sense. But again, I agree with legal. I don't know whether or not it is appropriate to do that. I would just like to see that before we put this on the books. So that's just my take on it.
I think it's a valid point that we can definitely research. My only hesitation with delaying this is the fact that we do have a radio grant that is out there in which we purchase radios. We're looking at utilizing one of the efficiencies that's in this proposed ordinance, which is utilizing the government pre-bid contracts for that purchase. This is delayed, you know, and so this is introduced here, then it's a public hearing at the next meeting, then it actually doesn't go into effect for 30 days. So the timing of this, it is, there's an advantage to get it passed.
So if this needs, the specific illustration you're giving is timely enough that the difference between 44 days and 60 days would hinder the ability to use that efficiency? efficiency? Because I would think that the question that I'm asking, our legal counsel would be able to discover between now and our next meeting. So you've got 14 days there, and then it's introduced two weeks after that, and then 30 days, so...
Normally, no, but as we're approaching June 30th, it could.
Okay. Well, again, I'm still a proponent of do it right the first time, and if the question that I'm asking is one that maybe we don't need to look at, and the council needs to weigh in, if they don't, if we don't have consensus that they think that this is something to look at, then I'm fine with us moving forward.
Yes. Ms. Labor, do you know the grant stipulations? Is it, do we need to spend that money by June 30th, or would this just be funds?
I'm not sure.
That we would just have to rebudget if we didn't? And that's the deadline that we're running up against. We had this on the forefront, because otherwise, the RFP process, the selection of that vendor is quite cumbersome under our current ordinance, when the state in all reality has already done the bidding and the procurement, which is why you want to take advantage of contract negotiations like this.
So I guess my thought is, if this makes it to its second reading by May 20th, it would be enacted by June 20th?
Then we have to receive the product by June 30th.
In 10 days.
I see.
Because we can't order until we have a contract.
But if we, yeah, I understand. So then, if this was on our May 15th meeting, and we are first, and then it was on May 6th, that would be, June 6th would be, if we move it forward, June 6th would be the earliest that it would go into effect, is that still too tight of a window to accomplish what you're talking about?
I have spoken with the vendor. I informed him of the timing of it being introduced tonight and possibly adopted. At the April 15th, going into effect May 15th, he said that he could meet that timeframe.
Okay.
I can certainly double-check. I mean, the other option is, I mean, it is a valid point that you bring up in regard to local contractor preference and being able to offer that to our local contractors. So from that standpoint, you know, bringing that particular portion back, if it's so directed, I don't think is an unreasonable request.
Are we going to lose those monies if we don't spend it by June 30th and receive that product?
Again, I don't have the grant information in front of me. That's sort of the deadline that we had. I'm not sure if it's a budget constraint over the June 30th, in which we could just rebudget those funds, or if it's an actual grant stipulation.
I don't know.
Okay. Because I agree, I think that there needs to be some consideration when it comes to local contractors and whatnot. I think we should look into it, at least to see if it's legal or not.
Okay. Just to be clear, I just want to make sure that it is understood, I think it is, that we don't currently have a 5% preference in the code that we're repealing for construction.
Right.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay.
How many times in recent history have we, as a city, not used a local contractor for something that was...
Non-federal money.
Non-federal money? Given the specific nature of equipment, we're pretty well-versed, I think, at the city, on what local contractors, what equipment they have, and what jobs they're capable of doing. That's my only thought. I mean, we're already a shop-local city, as far as construction, I mean, just...
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the jobs that recently that we've done that were not federally funded. I think the elevated tank was a state contract, so we'd have to look at the stipulations in there, but that one could have been it. That was a Curry County contractor, McLennan Construction.
And I would be...
Everything else has had federal grants, I think.
And I would be willing for us to move forward with this, and simply ask staff with consensus of the council to take a look at that component for the future, and to bring it back for an amendment, once we have time to... I don't want to hold anything up. I certainly don't want to hold up grant money of something that is really very important, of this procurement of these radios, because that's a public safety issue, and I don't want to do that. And we certainly have the opportunity to bring this back. I just think it's a good question for us to ask, and if we don't have the time to do it here, then I would simply ask, if we choose, if the council's wish is to move forward with this, and at the direction, or at the request of staff, that we provide direction to staff to look at that component and bring it back to us in a somewhat timely manner to bring it into the equation.
That'd be my preferred course of action.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Okay, well, let's take some public comment, then, if there's any public comment, and then we will bring it back to the council for possible action. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Bishop Black, Crescent City, I just wanted to thank you. I was sitting there thinking, but what about local people? And then you just brought it up, so, thank you.
Thanks for having me. Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? Okay, if we're going to bring it back to the council regarding ordinance 808, and our action would be to waive full reading by title only, and if we have action in that regard, I would take it now.
Move to waive full reading and read by title only, introduce ordinance number 808.
Second that.
Do we need to read in the entire thing, since there's also the adding and the repealing? Or is that sufficient, counsel?
Okay. You want me to start from the top, then, or?
Sure.
Okay. Move to waive full reading and read by title only, introduce ordinance number 808, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City amending the Crescent City Municipal Code by adding Title IV Procurement Procedures in repealing Chapters 15.3, 15.31, 15.33, and 15.34 of Title 15 Building and Construction.
All right. And I think it's Title 14. Sorry. I believe you said four.
Is there a staff report?
But you meant 14.
I said by adding Title 14, is that what you had meant?
There you go. Now that you've said it.
I also did...
I heard it wrong. Saying it twice is better than not saying it.
I also did only say "building" instead of "buildings."
Well, thank you for that. All right, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Potemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensor.
Yes. And do we have consensus from the council for staff to look into the potential of local preference for contracts and projects?
Absolutely.
We have consensus, so, staff, do you feel clear on that direction? Thank you. All right, we will move on, then. Me and my left hand. All right. To item number 12, which is a list of proposed local street projects for the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, better known as SB1. Yes, Mr. Weir, Mr. Olson?
So yes, it's that time of year again, it's where we can decide on how the council wants to spend the SB1 money. I would just like to state that this is our only, really, road repair money that we have in the budget, and so it is important, it is useful money from a city standpoint, because it doesn't have a lot of the strings attached to it that other road maintenance money does, where you have to spend it on an arterial road or a major collector for the city, this could be used on any road. So with that, I'd like Mr. Olson to tell you what his thoughts are.
Good evening, counsel. This is kind of a standard procedure, where we get to select the projects that we would like to fund with SB1 money, known as gas tax, or the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. And so what we're proposing here is three projects. One is Crack Seal Project. Basically, these were monies that were allocated, I think, in the previous fiscal year, and we're just, we reallocated them this year, and we're going to be pursuing some crack seal repairs. Also, the Crescent City Storm Drain Improvement Project. This is the Front Street Project, C Street, making some significant storm drain improvements. This was a project that was on the list last year, as well as the K Street Drainage Improvement Projects. We feel that these three projects will consume all of the funds that we will receive through SB1, and don't see a need to add anything else to the project and increase, you know, internal review or accounting for additional projects, because we do have to report to the state on each project that's on our list on an annual basis.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Olson?
Where would you be doing the crack seal and...
We have purposefully left it somewhat vague, so that we can have a little bit more flexibility. On a recent windshield survey that we did, we looked at Ninth Street, and also Eighth Street as probably a couple of prime candidates for a crack seal repair. Those are significant, those streets are in relatively good condition, they are starting, we are starting to see some cracks, and we want to make sure we're trying to keep the water out of our best pavements. So it's kind of a best pavement first model, where you maintain your very best roads, keep them in the highest quality condition, so...
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
How many projects in the city's queue are eligible for SB1 funding?
Sorry, how many?
How many projects do we have, you know, in our queue that might be eligible for this kind of funding, that aren't on this list?
We have significant road repairs that are needed, you know...
Name a street.
Pick one. So we've been trying to focus on the main arteries, arterials, excuse me, and collectors. So I think of Third, Fifth, Ninth, yeah, H.
A.
A. So A is one that's in need of significant repairs.
Yeah.
So we would probably need about multiple years of SB1 funds just to cover A Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Olson? Mr. Weir, anything that you want to add? Very good. Thank you. All right. Let's, hey, counsel, have anything you want to weigh in? Let's open up for public comment regarding Resolution 2019-13, and the list of projects for SB1 dollars. Any public comment? Okay, saying none, we'll close public comment, we'll bring it back to the council, then, for action.
Move to adopt Resolution 2019-13. Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Potemkeim?
Yes.
And Mayor Ensor.
Yes. Very good. Okay, we have come to the end of our regular agenda. We're not quite done yet, so... From legislative matters, I do want to introduce and ask for council's consensus regarding Assembly Bill 204, which was introduced by Assembly Member Wood. It is a bill that some of us have been working with him to address healthcare-specific issues, and it is a community benefit bill. And the reason for AB 204, and I'm just going to read this to you, because it's just simpler than me trying to explain it, this is out of the committee meeting from March 19th. "There are no standardized requirements for calculating and reporting community benefits. This makes it difficult for communities to know the value of the community benefits being provided by the hospital in exchange for its tax-exempt status. The author concludes that this bill is intended to assure that, as hospital systems grow in size, the individual hospital systems in the system remain meaningfully meaningful community partners." It is not meant to imply that if we take an opinion upon this, that we do not believe that our local hospital is not a meaningful community partner. It simply codifies a standard by which that community benefit should be measured, so that we can hear and anywhere else in the state of California that there is a standard system to define what that community benefit really is, and what those dollars that they put on a piece of paper mean, and how are they actually quantified into benefit to our community. And so I went to Sacramento and met with Assembly Member Wood, very much appreciate him approaching this, met with he and Dr. Duncan, and Supervisor Howard, and Supervisor Callen, and the local healthcare district has adopted a resolution in support, and I believe the county has as well, or will be at their next meeting. I'm not sure I missed their meetings.
Well, we wrote a letter of support from the healthcare...
Two by two by two.
Two by two.
Yeah. So I would, I'm just asking if there would be consensus on the council for a letter of support, provided we give you the appropriate documentation and background to this bill, so that we can put it on our next agenda for discussion and possible support.
There definitely would be from me.
I'm open to a discussion on this issue, for sure.
All right. So is that sufficient?
Direction received, we'll have it on the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And, okay, any other legislative items that anyone knows of that we need to address tonight? Okay? I have reached out, by the way, to the League of Cities, because this was not on their radar yet, and I've asked them to take a look at this as well. All right, Mr. Weir, city manager report?
Yes, today was the first day that the Fred and Pool opened back up, so I popped in this morning and saw some of the first users, bright and early, utilizing the pool. Everybody seemed very happy, although they informed me that we must have filled it with slow water. So that confused me for a little bit, until I finally got it, that they were out of shape because the pool was, so the water was a little slow, so...
Slow water.
So, yeah, so, yes, little swimmer jargon there. But I also informed them, as they keep coming, though, the water should get faster, in theory. I would like Mr. Olson to come up. Mr. Olson has some photos. I want to commend our city staff, as well as thank the public for their patience during this closure. There was a lot of work that was completed. The pool is looking good, the decks are painted, the pipes are holding, the pressure is great, and we're back up and running. So with that, Mr. Olson, you can take it from there. Tell the council exactly what was done.
I'm seeing my first pictures a little sideways here, so...
That's just me.
Try it. That didn't work. They definitely weren't sideways on my screen, so... All right, I just wanted to say, all the Public Works crews really pitched in. We utilized some local contractors to assist us in parts of the work that were needed, for example, concrete cutting. When you're cutting an eight-inch-thick slab, it's very difficult to cut with the type of equipment that we own, and so we were able to utilize local resources for that. Also utilized some outer-area resources, some technical experts, to help us, for example, with the new seal in the expansion joint. So right here, we've got John Blue, one of the city employees, vigorously digging at the expansion joint, so that it could be properly cleaned. It took two guys approximately 16 hours, a couple of full days' worth of work, to actually get that joint prepared and cleaned, so... You can even see a shop tool here that was custom-crafted just for this purpose, in our local shop here, by Jason Borges, so... It was nice to have these resources. I apologize that all these pictures are crooked. It's very unusual. Again, just prepping the joint here, Dan Borges, working diligently. Here, they've masked it off, they're part of the way through the application, ready to put the goop down, which was our second layer of protection. We used a SECA product that seems to be very durable and is holding up quite well. We used a CICA product that seems to be very durable and is holding up quite well. And then, this is just another shot of kind of the finished product, so you can see what it, what it looks like. So, that was one of the major, major areas that we had to leak in was basically in the side, side joint that you can see running up the wall. We were experiencing significant loss through that and we were able to make those repairs.
Wow. Wow. This is embarrassing. You know, I was going to say, I think I found out why we were losing water. Somebody tripped the pool upside down.
Just, just another shot showing the, the final expansion joint, the fact that we were, we did drain the pool all the way down to thoroughly clean, clean the bottom. One of the other major repairs that we made were, was a leak in the pressure line. So, as we circulate the water through the pool, through the filters, add the chemicals, make sure it's balanced, that pressure line was leaking. So, that was basically pumping our hot water onto the outside of the pool. So, that was a reason that we saw an increase in propane usage and a significant water loss. This was our first exploratory hole where we just dug one little hole through the deck, saw that there was water coming up in this hole and we said, oh no, we gotta, we need to explore some more. So, we started exploring, cut some concrete. Basically, we were trying to knock this out on a Saturday and quickly discovered that the location of the leak was going to be a little bit more difficult to get to than we originally anticipated, so. Here's our, one of our fearless leaders standing here overseeing this excavation. We did have to go down about six feet on the outside of, I say the outside of the pool and we were able to expose, expose conduits and pressure lines. So, as you can see, this is a very tight area to be working in. Fortunately, we have skilled employees that were able to get into the hole, finally locate a leak and make the necessary repairs. Unfortunately, we did a pressure test and we, we discovered that there was another leak. So, we continued excavating and continued excavating and here's Jay making another repair. Finally, we were able to put a pressure test on and we tested it to approximately 50 PSI, which is significantly greater pressure than what the pool normally will see in its, in its normal pumping cycles and that, that held. So, we felt that we were successful in fixing the leak. So, crews were able to bring a whole bunch of concrete in, basically a wheelbarrow-type brigade into the, into the pool here. Sorry, can't click happy. And, and refill this hole with concrete. So, let's see here, we have, just have preparation, put in the reinforcing bars and then finally finishing the deck. All right, some of the other activities that we did, the pool staff, we did, we did keep them rather busy, so many of them were engaged in painting along with some of our building crew, so they were able to paint office, the first aid room, the bathrooms, and the staff room was also painted. Were able to also stain, you know, restain the front counter. In this picture, it's kind of difficult to see, but right, right along the edge of the pool here and then right here, there's some of the plaster was, was chipping up, so we were able to go ahead and prepare those areas and then make some plaster repairs to help smooth out the overall condition of the pool floor, at least in spots where we really noticed there was some damage. One of the unfortunate things that we found was that the, the pool slide, the deck, there's a steel deck underneath of it, that right now is damaged and it's rusted completely through and so this is something that we weren't able to repair during the closure, but our pool pump is still, or not our pool pump, but our slide pump is still, hasn't been replaced, so, and we're also going to be getting some new steel decking so we can come in and reinforce this and just make a proper repair, but it affects the use of the slide for the time being, but not the rest of the pool, so. Utilized outage in the pool heater to go ahead and get Blue Star to install a new gas meter. It's a little bit larger size. Also, it allows us to, to use all the burning cycles on some of our pool heating equipment, so it helps some efficiencies there. New showerheads all around the, in all the locker rooms and then also out on the pool deck, so those seem to be much more gentle and that was one of the things that we picked up in our public pool meetings was a request, so we were able to just carry that out. This is the end of the pool slide. The paint was just coming off, so we had our guys get in there and we're able to recode it up nicely, so you get to see pretty much finished product there. There's a slot drain all around the edge of the pool on the deck that basically drains the water off of the deck, so you don't have, you know, standing water everywhere. So, that was thoroughly cleaned and blasted out with a pressure washer and some of our guys were concerned for their safety. It's very clean now. We were also in the shallow, shallow end of the pool able to go ahead and regrout the tile, at least at the shallow end of the pool, just taking advantage of some of the curing time that we needed for the expansion joint. Then also, some of the expansion joints on the deck of the pool, able to have some additional time for the curing of the main expansion joint, so we were able to get some other product in here, just get those joints cleaned up. Here, you can see some white sand that we put on, on top of those joints to just give it a non-slip surface. And then, we're also able to recoat the pool deck. Here's one of the lifeguards who's, who got to the opportunity to clean the drains in the bottom of the pool, which was also a good activity. So, definitely took to heart keeping lifeguards busy and they were. Took time to take care of the pool heater, go ahead and clean that up, get it all cleaned out, get a complete service on it and get it up into operation. And this is a picture of the pool this morning in operation about quarter after eight, so some people enjoying it and looks like they're having a great time, so. That's it.
All right. Good work.
The only other thing I would want to add about the pool project is some of the other things that we heard at the pool meeting, which was the, the opt-in pool notification. So, that is up on our website, so the people that want to be notified of current pool conditions or closures or, or things that might come unexpected or events, they can go to our city's website. They can simply enter in their email address and then they'll be in this listserv that then we'll get all the pool updates. The other thing that was just added to our city's website today is the current pool temperature reading. So, you could go to our website, you can click on an icon, it'll be on the right-hand side of the screen and that'll bring up the current pool temperature within the minute and so.
It's 83 degrees right now.
There you go.
That's what it says.
And that was a, a device that was handmade by our IT administrator, Fritz Ludeman, so.
Awesome.
Kudos to all staff.
Very good. Okay, anything else, Mr. Weir? All right.
All right, so, that was just one of the, the activities that we were working on. Also of note, over the past couple of weeks, we had the Pool Master Plan Meeting that was held on the 19th. Fairly large group of individuals came out again to hear about the Pool Master Plan. Our consultant has taken that information as well as the empathy interviews that staff has worked on and the Pool Master Plan should be presented to the council at our next council meeting by our consultant, George Dines with Councilman Huntzaker. So, that is one thing to look forward to next meeting. Unfortunately, that same night, at the same time, was the Leaden Awards, the Law Enforcement Agency of Delmore Annual Award Ceremony. And with that, Chief Mensal recognized the individual that we just talked about, our IT administrator, Fritz Ludeman. And so, he was recognized by the Police Department for all of his services that he offers the Police Department, law enforcement in general and for the great job that he does. Also recognized at the Leaden was, was Officer Lowe. Officer Lowe is our school resource officer and was committed for the excellent job that he has been doing in that, in that line of service, which is not the, the easiest line of service, especially at Delmore High School, but he has a great job relating to the kids, getting their respect and, and cooperation and being a mentor to them. So, hats off to, to Officer Lowe. Other things council should be aware of, wastewater treatment plant operation and maintenance are a piece, are progressing. We have interviews scheduled with two of the top consultants this next week, April 10th, in which the selection committee will be, will be interviewing those firms. Once we have a top selected firm, we'll be scheduling probably a workshop with the council to discuss the, to discuss the top firm and some of the, the merits of possibly going that route or possibly staying with the, with the city under operation. So, that'll be coming probably the first part of May in that. The other part that the city's been working on, just starting to work on, is budget. So, it is that time of year again. So, just want to remind council, May 16th, which is a Thursday night, would be, would be what we're shooting for, for our budget hearing. So, if that date does not work for you, please let us know. Is it the 14th? It's a Thursday. The Thursday that is closest to...
13.
Okay, 16. That's all I have.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Were you able to utilize any of your confined space training?
We were, as a matter of fact, able to use some of that confined space training and yes.
Six feet underground is, you know, significant.
It, it, it was a, it was a challenge. That is, that is for sure, especially in that type of location and yes, given, given that. So, Mr. Wiley has felt it for several days, apparently, some of the stretches that he was able to do, but we were fortunate to have him and the dedicated staff to get it all done.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I know the public very much appreciates all the hard work. Okay, we are at the end of our agenda, but we are going to be going back into closed session, but before do that, if, if council has anything that they would like to report out on their own of their doings over the last two weeks or new words that we need to learn, council, right?
So, your awkward of the day is money and it's chic, just like you think like your cheek.
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 Say it again.
Cheek.
No. Thank you.
Cheek.
Money. That's the word for money. Cheek, like your cheek. Anti-climactic, right?
We don't know the word for cheek yet, but we're going to learn.
We'll, we'll get there. We'll get there.
We're going to stick with money.
Four years.
Money's good.
One word at a time.
All right. Anything else that you'd like to report?
You know, I actually, since we didn't get to kind of share last time, I went to the Crystal Ball Casa fundraiser at the Cultural Center and I had been in the Cultural Center once or twice before, but never for an event like this and it was absolutely gorgeous and I really don't see why we aren't having an event there every weekend, a couple of times for weddings and things. Absolutely gorgeous.
Thank you.
Yes. That's it for me then.
Okay. Councilmember Follman?
Three items. I attended the Pool Master Plan Meeting on the 19th. I attended the True North Regional Convening in Orick on the 23rd and last Thursday, I attended the Humboldt and Delmore Counties Central Label Council Awards Banquet where I was introduced to Jeff Hunterlack and you guys have probably seen this all in your email now, the Public Works Compliance Workshop hosted by the Building and Construction Trade Council of Humboldt and Delmore Counties. That's on May 9th. I promised him that I'd, you know, invite everybody on council to it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Greenow?
I just have one thing. I had a auditor committee meeting with the mayor as well as staff on the 20th of this month, so.
Okay. Very good. Or Jim Kein?
I too, attended the Pool Master Plan Meeting. Lots of good ideas, a great turnout of people and they seemed to really appreciate just the things that had been done so far. A lot of more positivity in that. I also attended the First Animal Casa Crystal Ball and I have to agree with you, Isaiah, the Ad-hoc Committee, Jason and I, the Cultural Center Ad-hoc Committee and, and a few others, we, we agree with you completely. It is a magical building. It's beautiful and takes a little bit of talent to figure out how to decorate it, but when it's done, it's absolutely an amazing asset that this city has and I'm really, really pleased that an event of that magnitude was brought back to it, so. It looked wonderful. Anyway, that's all I have.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Very quickly, tried to get as much stuff done last, the week before last as possible. Did attend the pool meeting, worked with, as Councilmember Greenow mentioned, the Audit Committee. We will begin interviews tomorrow and Wednesday. Had tri-agency meeting, solid waste meeting, had a, a meeting to continue to work towards the Embassy Grant for our sister city, had a LAFCO meeting. Then I was, I was indisposed for a couple of days after having surgery and then did some work from home with a couple of conference calls prior to today, so. Look forward to, I'm sorry that, that I wasn't as creative as our Mayor Protem who chose to use April 1st and an April Fools joke to, to get us all earlier today. I was not creative enough to come up with anything, but it's 7:28 and the public gets to go home, so no fooling. We are adjourned from our regular meeting. We are going into closed session. All right. Thank you.